I want to call an order. Since it's six o'clock, maybe six oh one, a call to order the regular meeting, regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Alderman and Board of Rango Viejo, Texas, on April 10th at six o'clock. Cheryl, continue in real talk.
I recognize that following present, Mr. Dorsett, Mr. Hopper, Mr. Light, Mrs. Lutens, and Mr. Salinas, so you do have to come for the meeting, and Rusty Falk sitting in for Mr. Rencho.
Will we all stand and listen, please? If you have a question, go ahead.
Father, we thank you for this beautiful day, and for all the days that you have given us to be with our family and friends. May our decisions this evening bring us closer to achieving our community goals. Let us all remember, always in our prayers, for our military personnel that are serving all over the world. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the laws of the United States of America, and to your public citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brilliant. You can look out there and see all these people here just doing their job. Really great. Number four, rest is for. Does anyone here have something they would like to speak about, other than those things that are on the agenda?
Mayor, I have one item. I received this, as I guess every other Alderman did, from Sanchez, Wynton, Sabarte, and Wood, regarding the dismissal of Officer Narciso Hernandez.
Yes.
And they stated here that, in exchange for the client's resignation, of a severance package, and I wonder if you could comment on that.
Sure. The officer, if the officer, the lieutenant was fired, the reasons and so forth would have to go on the record. So anytime anyone was going to hire him, he, any research done, that would be on the record. Rather than do that, we gave him the opportunity before the Board of Alderman gave him the resignation, and that was the important thing.
But there was a severance package involved. This man hadn't been with us not even a year.
Yeah, we paid him two weeks. Uh, pardon. As a severance package.
I thought it said here three months.
Oh, no. We're sorry. That's not correct. We paid him two weeks. Does anyone else have anything that they would like to bring up and discuss?
Yes, Mayor, do we have a plan on our war?
Could you state your name and your address?
Sure, I'm Max Carley. We have a little talk we had with you down here.
Thank you.
Do we have a plan on this mosquito war that we're going to be fighting for a while?
We've sprayed for mosquitoes three times. And we sprayed for mosquitoes, we sprayed both the streets of Rancho and the golf course of Rancho. As you know, the golf course is probably where most of the breeding is done. The spraying that we do, when we spray for mosquitoes, the mosquitoes have to be flying to be killed. So you have to spray during the time that they're most active. Late in the evenings, not late in the night, but late in the afternoon or early in the morning. But that doesn't kill any of the larvae that are in the water. The club has put those pellets into the water that will kill them. Today, I was out on the golf course, and never killed a mosquito for the first time. But should they come back, we'll spray again. If that doesn't get them, the only other thing to do that I'm aware of is to aerial spray the entire city. There's a lot of people that don't like doing that, and as you know, it's hard to get information out to people in Rancho Viejo. We have one paper that's a monthly paper, and not more than 20 percent of the people in Rancho take it. It's hard to get the information out. And we would want to give people warning that we are going, if we aerial spray, hopefully it wouldn't come to that. I hope that answers your question. But another thing you can look for, as I walk around the city, I notice that there are spots where mosquitoes attack me when the wife and I are walking. There's other spots that they don't. Mosquitoes generally don't travel far from their area. Maybe two or three houses would be about the total movement that they have. The man that was spraying also suggested at that time that some of these mosquitoes were being blown in from Mexico. Because if you remember, the wind was 30 miles an hour, 40 miles an hour, and so forth. I don't know whether that's right or whether that's wrong. But we will keep after the spraying. Uh, appreciate it. Yes, ma'am.
Jane Rosamond Tesoro, I don't claim to be a mosquito eradication expert, but we battled mosquitoes pretty well on South Padre Island for the ten years I was on board. Just from casual observations of the truck when it's spraying, they go too fast. We had that problem with the guy that did our mosquito spraying on the island for a lot of years, and, you know, he's doing it late in the day, and he's anxious to get done. But they really do need to, this is the information that we were told when we would complain to the company that was providing us with the chemicals that were approved for us to use, is that, you know, that truck needs to move slow enough that that spray really can cover the area that it needs to do. So I think that that's something that you, you know, might explore and talk with your driver about.
That makes sense. And to the tabs that we're spraying, the wind was blowing 20 miles an hour, and that doesn't count spraying at all. But if we did spray, then we wouldn't have killed any. This way, we killed some. Not as many as we wanted to, but you can, we get enough phone calls with as many as we kill, you know, what are you doing? You're not doing anything, so it's 22 on that. But we will talk to the driver with your knowledge and your experience of South Padre, and see if we can't get him to do that, just looking. Anyone else? Number five, approval amendments. Before we get to the regular meeting on March 13th, I was asked at the last meeting about, and the meeting before that, about the amendment to amendments from our special meeting on February the 1st, 2007. And I said I was researching, and I did research it. I listened to the tape, and the information that needs to be modified, or was requested to be modified, was in fact discussed during that meeting. As everyone knows on the Alderman, that Cheryl takes what she feels like is the salient points during the meeting. Not every word, word for word, recaps it and presents it in summary. So in this, in the amendments that we approved, it's, the comment says, Alderman Dorsett questioned the legality of the lots in question. What Mr. Dorsett then gave Cheryl that he would like to amend it is, based on my question of the agreement that was reached between the town and the club in 1986, I have absolutely no reason not to think that we ought to amend the minutes to include that, which just is expanding on what it already said about questioning the legality of the lots in question. Expand on what portion, why these questions is legality. So if I could hear a motion that we modify the minutes, amend the minutes from the special meeting on February the 1st, 2007, to include after the question of legality, based on my question on the agreement that was reached between the town and the club in 1986. Hear your motion to approve that.
I would like to make that motion to go ahead and amend the minutes and include the phrase that explains why I made you.
One second. All in favor? Okay, so those minutes will be amended. Now, do you have a copy of the minutes for the March 13th, 2007? Do I have any comments on those, or do I hear a motion to approve those?
I move here, move on the minutes of the March 13th meeting.
Your second. All in favor? Number six, consideration approval of resolution on appointment of election judges, appointment of early voting ballot board, rate of pay for election judges, and amendment of voting. So the resolution is in your folder. But the persons named as appointed are Gene Hager as the presiding judge, Gladys Cummings as the alternate presiding judge. The hourly rate, we increased the hourly rate. We're going to pay a big time this time. We're up to $8 an hour for the election. It was $6 an hour. We upped it to $8 an hour. The method of voting would be by hand count paper ballots. We would have the electronic filling device to help handicap people. It will be here for anyone that needs to use the handicap voting. But we would use paper ballots rather than the electronic voting machine. Number one, ballots are way, way more expensive. Number two, as you remember, last year, they couldn't get it rolled out, and they've had a lot of problems with it, and we don't need those problems. So we decided that we're going to go continue with the paper ballots as we get them. We'll have the ballots for the other handicap device. We've ordered, I think, 25 of those, and the rest of them are the paper ballots. So do I hear a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make the motion. Second.
All in favor? Number seven, it's time for appointment and reappointment of members in alternates to the, some of the members in alternates to the planning and zoning commission. As Mr. Wilson, who has served on the board for some time, has just done a great job, is asked to resign from the board. We accepted that resignation, and Oscar Gonzalez, who is a regular member of planning and zoning, is asked to become an alternate. So I'd like to, and then Laura Partridge's term is up, and she, I'd like to reappoint her. She's the chairman of the planning and zoning. And then I would like to appoint Diane Johnson as the other regular member of the planning and zoning board. Hear the discussion? Hear a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Your second, a second. Go ahead.
Well, I have had my.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Number eight, consideration action on master plan for Rancho Viejo. Some of the things that we felt like was needed for the town is to have a more permanent solution to the issues that confront the town. One of the main issues that confronts the town is the, are the roads. We had a committee appointed, and a very good job done by Mr. Salinas to present the road rehabilitation plan. It was approved, and that gives us a 10-year plan, so we know what we're going to need to do for the next 10 years. The other side of that is, what are we going to do with subdivisions? What are we going to do with Rancho Viejo from a commercial standpoint, from a building standpoint? What ordinances in Rancho Viejo are outdated? Which ones are in conflict with other ones? And what can we do to update where everyone knows, when you put a subdivision in, here's what the roads look like, here's how it's green areas, here's what the lots sizes have to be, here's what the house sizes have to be, and all the other factors that go in to put a subdivision together. Carla Lutens has taken on the responsibility of putting together a master plan, and I'm going to, and just done a wonderful job with it, and I'm going to turn it over to her so she can explain what she's done and what her committee has done.
Thank you, Mary. This is really, and I think there were copies on the table back there. I hope everyone that did want one received one. In that, we'll make sure that you do get a copy. This is actually a summary of almost about nine months' work. Last July, the committee was formed by the mayor, and the people on the committee are Bobby Duffy, Sonia Richardson, Alderman Dorsett, Mike Ortiz, myself, and in September, we also added Maria Garza to the committee. One of the first things we did is kind of an informal community inventory, looking at perceived strengths and weaknesses in Rancho Viejo. You'll find those listed in the reports, and we're always open to hearing what you think is great about Rancho Viejo, and also what you might perceive as a weakness, because that will certainly help our planning. After analysis of the weaknesses, and those are on page four and, or four and five of that report, and after reviewing all the ordinances and policies, we created a list of possible threats facing Rancho Viejo. Those also are listed. And then we looked at those threats, and we came up with four areas of goals. We have some general goals, and there are five of those. Under the area of development, there are 18 goals. Streets and roadways, five, and overall quality of life, six. And what I want to stress is that this is an ongoing living document. We are thinking that it's all-inclusive. That's as of printing in March of this year, but it certainly is meant to be updated and changed as, as the needs or as issues confront us. Some of the things, the goals in here are general ones we've already done, like our vision statement that you'll see on the first page, and also in Appendix B. In adopting this, if the board does so choose to do that, you'll notice we're not adopting specific ordinances. These are areas that we are thinking are, that are concerned and should be addressed. So an example of a goal might be to review and update if needed, and, or consider developing, rather than we are absolutely going to do this. So now the really hard work, after the nine months of work of putting it together, will begin, the actual implementation of the plan. Does anyone have any questions?
Let me, before we get to that, let me, when we vote on this tonight, what we're voting on is to approve the concept of this master plan. We are not approving an ordinance. The ordinance is going to be lit. There will be public hearing, there'll be advertising paper because they're out of planning and zoning ordinances, and they will come before the Alderman for approval. But what we're trying to do is to get on paper those thoughts that we need to have in this community, and approve the concept of the master plan. Now, are there any questions by the Alderman? Any questions by the?
And if I could add one more thing. Some of the things that don't require ordinances, we have already gone ahead and taken care of, like I said, in regards to the vision statement. We also are working on, you can see over here on the, hanging there, the new mapping of Rancho Viejo, and that clearly will illustrate for us, or does illustrate, the ETJ area and our new Rancho Viejo city limits, including La hacienda. The one in color illustrates our current zoning. So we're up to date on those. I think Mr. Gonzalez, our engineer, is going to be incorporating the names of the streets into the larger one with the ETJ.
Anybody have any questions or comments on the?
Well, I would, just a few things here. I would like to thank the members of the planning committee for the time and effort that they invested to create the master planning document. But I do have concerns with some of the proposals and the premise of the master plan. And that's what I'd like to find out, are we going to have a chance to do this before some of these things that we have that maybe we don't see eye to eye on?
Definitely, definitely. And that is why the whole plan is worded to consider developing, rather than to actually develop something. So it is, and any ordinance that comes down the pipe will have to be, will have to have a public hearing, and the board will have to approve.
But in addition to that, the concept, if approved, the concept will be there. And that's like Ms. Lutens said, that is a living document. We will modify it as we need to modify it. And if it gets more specific, then that would be the form of the ordinance that we approved initially. But there are, there are certain goals in here that 50 percent of the people may object it, and 50 percent of the people may accept. That's always that possibility when you start setting goals for the city.
I did.
There's not, there's not necessarily consensus in every one of these with every person on the committee.
That's true.
Well, just as long as we have a chance to meet and argue ordinance.
Yes, and we will.
You know, because I think there are a lot of them there that should be looked at.
Good.
And a lot of the ordinances should be changed, there's no doubt about it.
Okay, and the only other thing I wanted to add is, is the method or the process of doing this was in accordance with the comprehensive planning for small Texas cities, which is put out by the Texas Chapter of American Planning Association. So we didn't just kind of fly by the seat of our pants, so to speak. We did have a little bit of guidance.
Mayor, I did, just to clarify, a point on the lighting. I know that, because I've had this complaint with some of the residents too, and I noticed AEP is here. Could you tell me the difference between the concrete, the wood pole? What can accept the longest arm, so to speak, for poles? Are you aware of that? Is it concrete or wood?
Wood.
It's wood, right? Okay, well, that's what we need to hear. Did you notice that?
I've tried to get them to stretch the arms that are on the poles. The problem we have with lighting, there's a couple of problems we have with lighting. First, it was the town of Rancho Viejo was set up to have a pole every 300 feet. That was the first ordinance that was set up. The population was sparse. They put them in every 600 feet to come back in and put them in at 300 feet at later that. Then the ordinance was changed by the Board of Alderman to go every 500 feet. Our current ordinance is every 500 feet. The problem is, is that the trees that were three feet high are now 20 feet high, and the limbs knock out the light. So even if you put them closer, it really wouldn't help very much in a lot of areas. So if you go down Carmen, you'll see down towards that, you'll see some of the long arms that reach out over to a fourth of the highway, almost to the middle, but not to the middle, but towards there. They're out of the way of the trees, and we require that the trees over the highway would be cut back to 12 feet. They have to be 12 feet above, and they're not all of Rancho, but that's the ordinance that they have to be 12 feet above. I asked AEP about that, and AEP told me that our poles that we have won't take the longer arm. The wood poles would have to be installed to use the longer arm. I don't know if anybody would really want to do that. So the lighting question is going to be, has to be answered. I don't know what the answer is, but there is going to have to be an answer for it. If it were longer arms, that'd be wonderful. But you could take three or four areas and say, new pole in there, and half the distance would really help, and then you could take three or four other areas and it won't.
I think that's the main concern, the, is the distance between one pole and another. I think that's what I've got to do with people that are huge, but.
In some cases, if that's correct, 500 feet doesn't work. But if you go look at those streets, 500 feet, 300 feet wouldn't work either. If the trees are such that it blocks out all of the light, because they've grown up around the light, it doesn't, it won't spread, it won't get there. There needs to be a comprehensive plan for lighting, there's no doubt about it. We have, with our street structure, the way that we, the number of walkers, joggers, bicyclists that we have, we need to have some protection, and the only protection is going to be better lighting. But, and I wished, if we're only a matter of money, that we'd go out and put in more purposes. I wish that were. In some cases, it is. Some cases, we can fix just with more purposes. I think that's a good project for someone to take on, an answer for that. Anybody else? Anyone in the, in the audience have any questions on the next topic? Remember, take, yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. Could you stand up and state your name for the record, please?
Rosie, 2016, Tesoro. I've noticed that we always see burned-out lights. Who is in charge of making sure that they're replaced in a timely manner?
We have the police look for them, and the call-ins from the residents.
Well, I've done that before, and then I was told, well, the city has to pay for it, so.
No, we don't. All we do is we call AEP, and they go in and put them up, city of the label.
I'd just make a comment, because I did discuss this with AEP, and what they're doing is they're changing from the halogen to the mercury vapor, because they also give off more light. So that's, that's part of the plan.
Also, like, there'll be a burned-out light right here, and then right over here, there's one that you can tell is going to go out like in two minutes. But if they didn't get a work order, you know, if I telelogically place that one, they can't do it until they go and get another work order, whatever that is.
And fortunately, we're going to get to hear from AEP in a minute, since the boss here, and we'll, and we'll find out about that, when they go, yes, yes.
Lou Fruia, one of the, one of the things that, one of my pet peeves on here is the lighting, of course, and I have to agree with Mr. Salinas and Ms. Lutens, and I think, I think all of you are, yeah, know about this, but I think, I really and truly believe that some of these lights are just spread way apart. If you go out at night, and I, and I do a lot of night driving at night, and you can go to an area, and it's absolutely dark, black, you can't see anything, and you can be driving, and all of a sudden, a person is standing right in front of you, because there's no lights. And I really believe that the poles are just spread too far apart, and it's very, very dangerous. And one other thing, too, is that some way, sooner or later, we have to start dividing the streets a little bit, put some kind of line or something, because again, if you drive at night, or if you go out at night, you'll see people driving on the opposite side of the road, and it's just, it's just real dangerous, and I think that we need to look into something like that, too.
I know, I just wanted to comment, and in particular, Alborato, because of the curvature of the road and the trees, it's, it's a question of maybe putting a small light in between.
It wouldn't take much for somebody to just get in a golf cart or a police car at night and just travel the city, and you can actually see what we're talking about.
I'd like to hear a motion to approve the concept of the master doc, master plan as a living document to be modified and adjusted as members of the Alderman and the community see fit. And each time that document is modified, it will come before the Board of Alderman for their approval or the Board. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor? Number nine, consideration approval of payment of $160,000 of the tax note originally scheduled for payment on November the 1st, 2012. And what we're saying is, is that we have $160,000 that we would like to pay, that I'd like to have paid in advance of the loan note, which is 2012, November 1st, 2012. And what that does, what that does is, we had, if we paid the. And what that does, what that does is, we had, if we paid the notes as they were originally advertised, we would be paying $382,100 in interest. By making this $160,000 prepayment, our interest will be, we will save $144,250 worth of The total interest, rather than being $382,100, would be $237,850. The $160,000 is coming from the sale of the old townhome. Do I hear a motion to approve the prepayment of $160,000?
I'll make a motion.
Please.
The $144,000 savings in interest includes the $220,000 that we prepaid in November. So the $220,000 plus this $160,000 results in $144,000 are saved. Anyway, I'll make a motion to approve.
One more comment on that. The balloon note at the end, if you remember, because of our source of income was a property tax, we could not get more than a seven-year bond. The balloon note in the seventh year is $95,000, but originally, before we made these prepayments. Okay, now-
I'll make a motion to approve the prepayment of $160,000, and note due November first, 2012. I'll take that second.
All in favor? Now, Nick Whitehead wants to hear what we've got to. Number 10, report from AEP representative. AEP is the person that supplies the infrastructure, not the actual electricity. You buy that from Blue or you want, see, anyone else? It's the infrastructure that AEP provides. That's the one that's carrying the electricity here. They're going to make a presentation for approximately 30 minutes. After that, we're going to have a question and answer period. And the question and answer period is going to go like this, is that a person that wants to ask a question will raise their hand. When they're recognized, they'll ask the question. AEP will then be given the opportunity to respond to that question. Then, the next person that asks a question raises their hand and is recognized, and then asks the question. You don't want to get it out of here where everybody's yelling and talking and doing all that, that same thing. That way we will get through it. Also, as you know, we are filming all these Alderman meetings. They are on the web. You can go to our website and call it up and review that. So those people that aren't here that would like to look at it, or if you'd like to review it, it is on the web. The meeting's on the web, the video's on the web. Chris is doing a great job, and it will be available to all the residents of Ratcho V A. Mr. Wilson, would you like to make your presentation, please?
Appreciate that, thank you very much. I'm Jared Don Wilson, American Lake of Power. I'm the Community Affairs Manager in Weslaco, but I cover this area. This is one of Miami towns, and I know Mayor Flood and some of the councilmen. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Thank you, citizens, for being here. We have a good story to tell. I know we've had some power quality issues here. We've had quite a few in the last couple, three months. But we have some ma, some major changes, and it has some good changes. But it takes time. You just can't do this overnight. It's two important things that AEP looks at daily, every day, and that's our customers and our employees. They mean everything to us. And what you're going to hear from these folks here, you're going to be surprised at the good things that is coming out of this, and the exposure of these outages are going to be a lot less. Like to introduce to you Sam Silva. He's our Manager of Distribution Systems. He's San Benito. He covers a big area. He covers from Real Branch City all the way to Brownsville, up to Harlingen, McAllen, all of those towns. And also, we have Pete Gonzalez, which is Transmission Substation in the, in the Transmission Arena. He's our engineer in San Benito. And then we have the old guy from Corpus Christi, Texas, that's Rick Sherwood. He is Transmission Line Manager. He covers a huge area. We're talking about west Texas, all the way down here at Texas Central Company, which is south of San Antonio coming all the way down the valley. And our greatest guy in the back that you know very well is Buddy Finks, who's our Supervisor of Distribution System. You got any questions at all? Ask him. Again, thank you for coming. Our slide presentation, we have it in the back today. It's not on the side because it wasn't going to be big enough here. So if you would kindly, please turn your chair so you'll get the series. This is very good information. I don't know who's going to be up first, but I think it's Pete Gonzalez. Pete's going to do the first part of the transmission. He's going to do the Transmission Arena where our Transmission Lines come into this area, and he's going to explain to you some of the power quality issues that we've had with Transmission. And then from there, he's going to tell you the improvements that we have made since then. Pete?
Good evening, everybody. Want to thank the mayor and Board of Alderman for the opportunity to be here and give this presentation. Our presentation's going to be basically in two parts. I'm going to go first, and then Sam will go second, and at that point in time, Mayor Wilson, we'll have the question and answer session. I think it'll be minutes to load this up. We shut it down to the noise, the humming. I hope everyone can see this. We want to start off with a quick overview of the Transmission System. And basically, this is our organization, like any other corporation, kind of split. We've got to follow several federal rules. And so we, we are the Texas Central Company. And just, we, just for a lot of you that are panical, living in this area, this is basically the territory of the old Central Power Line Company. So as you can see, we go basically past El Rio, all the way down to south Texas, up to Del Campo. So basically, our Transmission System for the Texas Central Company consists of 4,800 miles of line. This is Transmission Line consisting of 69,000 volts, 138,000, and 345,000 volts. We basically cover about, what was it, 44 towns, roughly, about 226 cities. So we, we cover a wide range of territory here. What we've been investing in our, in our Transmission System since about 2004, as you can see here, we've completed in the Valley, $200 million. Overall, it's been for the Transmission System, $502 million. So we've gotten a good share of the money that's being invested down here in the Valley. Right now, under construction, we roughly have about $17 million out of 163 million for the Texas Central Company. And we have planned, and this plan goes up to about 2009, as far as 2009, about $135 million out of 526 million. So basically, we're investing in the Texas Central Company, in our system, about 1.2 billion in the standard of five years. So we wanted to show you how much, how much money we're investing here in the Valley. And it's a pretty good share. Corporate-wise, we are spending about, close to, nearly close to half of the money that compared to, you know, that's being funded every year, you know, in the last couple of years. So we are investing a lot, I think, here in the Valley. And of course, the Valley for us and the Transmission System goes from, from Brownsville to Fountain, up to Rainville and Annenberg. So that's basically our, our territory of the Valley area. Now, part of the reason why we're here is to talk about what we call the Brownsville Loop Improvement. And this is basically the east part of the Valley. We've got two, we split the Valley into sections, the west end and the east end Valley. And this is majority of the, of the east end Valley. And if y'all can see on, on here on the map, the Turquoise Line, these are Transmission Lines. These are projects where from the previous chart that everyone saw, that money's being invested. Now, on the Magenta Line is what we call the Brownsville Loop. This is the 69,000 volt line. And basically, we start from San Benito, our main, the heart of the, of the east end of the Valley. And we travel in a counterclockwise direction, basically, to a station we have called Cabasas, then on to Brownsville Switches Station, on to, it's not shown here, but we have a, a Brownsville Station. And then from, from Cabasas Station to Los Fresos Substation, on back to La Palma. So we have a loop for the Brownsville. And basically, the Rockville community, as we'll see further in another slide, is majority being fed out of the Cabasas Station. But for the last, since '04, we've been doing maintenance on this whole entire loop. And on, on our next slide, the- This is, my slides are out of order, but basically, since 2004, as you can see here, in 2004, we spent $22,000 roughly in, in the loop. And this is basically the section, as I was talking about, the different sections of this Transmission Line, from Brownsville Switches Stations to Cabasas. And basically, and this, what we spent here on the $22,000 was mainly in replacing the conductive crossarms, poles, corroded insulators. All this was followed during our inspections. And typically, on the Transmission Line, where we don't, where we basically just have your typical crossarms, poles, insulators, the conductor on it, doesn't change too much. So as we go on to 2005, it's going to a little bit more money, and now we invested $68,000 on the La Palma to Los Fresos section. And again, same thing, basically, from our inspections that, that we did, and we ended up replacing some conductive crossarms, poles, and insulators. Then in 2006, a major jump. And this was on the section from Los Fresos to Brownsville. And basically, same thing again, replaced conductive crossarms, poles, and corroded insulators, followed our inspection. Every year, we do inspections, we do, we do walking inspections, we do climbing inspections. And our folks out there document all this information, and we, we go out there and repair them. In 2007, year-to-date right now, we spent $8,000 on the La Palma to Cabasas section. And basically, again, we replaced crossarms, poles, and insulators. Now, as of April 2nd, we've done a comprehensive inspection on all the line sections, not only just the La Palma to Cabasas. This is the whole entire loop, which is from La Palma, Cabasas, Cabasas, Brownsville, Switch, Switches Station, from Cabasas Switches Station to Brownsville, Brownsville, Los Fresos, and back from Los Fresos to La Palma. And we started to identify and repair any abnormalities that we found. And at this point in time, what we're doing is we're infrareding the line, especially on our conductor sleeves, what we do, we have slice points in conductors in our connections. So this, this $80,000 is going to grow some more after this inspection is done, and we go out and repair any abnormalities. All these dollars that we spent from '04 to '07 are made as expenditures, and they're not, they're not figured in in that previous chart we showed about the investments. That was mainly all capital investments. And that slide we just talked about from '04 to '07 was purely maintenance. Now, this is our outage summary year-to-date for 2007. Y'all can see a note there about the transformer failure that took place on January 23rd, From, from that date on to today, these are the outages we've had with our Transmission Line System, or our Transmission System. On February 19th, we had an interruption, and a little bit over an hour, and we racked up a total of 277 customer minutes. And it was a permanent outage, and what we had was a failed line insulator. And basically, the, what we, what we found or the cause was on that insulator, we had a corroded steel shaft on the insulator. And as you saw on the previous slide, most of our repairs on our maintenance dollars have been utilized, has been towards basically, you know, poles and crossarms and insulators. In, on, about a week later, we had various momentary outages. And, and basically, a customer minutes that was under a five-minute timeline, so we don't have a customer minutes outage, but basically, we, we, from what we could see in our, in our centralized location in Corpus is that the line operated seven times. March 19th, 2007, about 39 minutes, we had a customer minute outage of 437,224 minutes. There's a permanent failed line conductor, our conductor burned into under repair steps. One thing I want to kind of explain is, you'll, you're probably looking at it and saying, well, you know, on 19th, we had a little bit over an hour, and that was only 277 customer minutes. But here we have this outage for 39 minutes, and we have 437 customer minutes. Depending on which section of the line we've lost in this whole Brownsville Loop, that's either fallen, or typically, it's just, it's fallen, it's, whatever, whichever station is in line, that affects, that's how many customers, that's how we're being measured in customer. So for one minute, we had 2,000 customers on that station, and 2,000 customer minutes that. So that's a reason for the, the variance. On March 29th, again, we had a momentary outage, and suspect of a, a tree being on the line, we had it trimmed, and- line, we had it trimmed, and basically, just probably even wanted to get solid for life, splater, and went back online. At the same day, basically, at the same time, we did have a permanent outage for a hundred and nine thousand five hundred and ninety-two minutes. And the outage is an under voltage strip. But right now, we're investigating this, and this is breaker thirty-two hundred in Los Fresnos. Right now, our loop is, we don't have, on our transmission loop, we don't have too much of a backup at this time. We're working on some improvements to have some added backup on the transmission line. But when one of the sections of the line operates or drops out, you know, how it kind of reacts differently. And in this case, it didn't bolt it down just enough that the breaker opened up, and others sitting there. There was a drive, it was probably done, nothing was found, and we're still investigating at this point in time, and this is what we're, we know that was a cause, and why, is that's what we're still trying to determine, what went wrong with our part. A day later, we had another outage, and this one was pretty long, looking about, almost about nine hours. And basically, you're gonna wonder, again, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and ten customer minutes, depending on the section of the line we lost. And in this case, we had an anchor rock fail, and this is the low ground. When we do our walking inspections, our climbing inspections, there's actually per inside of our substation. But we can only basically inspect everything that's low ground, nothing poles, and this happened a couple of feet under the ground before it broke out. And last, on March thirty-first, again, we had a momentary outage, we had a lot of lightning in the area, and experienced a momentary operation due to weather, and we didn't have anything else at that time. I want to talk to you, to everyone here, about the stations, but I mentioned that we have the transmission line, and within, in line with our transmission line, we have stations that serve all the customers in the area. On the Brownsville Loop, we talked about Cabasos. Our Cabasos Station, for many people that are not aware of our Cabasos Station, basically, it's on FM seventeen thirty-two that we had our outage on January twenty-third. At that point in time, we went ahead and reduced the station capacity from nine point four MVA to sixteen MVA, so we nearly doubled our capacity to be able to handle, and you add load, and transferring of load. And in conjunction with this, we went ahead and added single-phase feeder regulators right outside the substation. And what this does is provide better voltage regulation to the customers. And we spent roughly, approximately a hundred thousand dollars in this whole improvement. In conjunction with that, after we basically completed the improvements at the Cabasos Station, we have a temporary location that we call Town Station. We went ahead and added a ten point five MVA transformer. This is additional capacity. It is along FM seventeen thirty-two, and basically, what we did here is we tapped off our one thirty-eight KB transmission line, one thirty-eight thousand volt line. This is not part of the Brownsville Loop. By doing this, as you can see, it's a different source in Cabasos. We'll be able to utilize this in case of emergencies for the Rancho Viejo community. This has, so far, and is still growing, has cost us a hundred and fifty thousand, and we worked this in conjunction with the Cabasos Station for improved reliability. Now, part of the other improvements in this loop is that, here we have our system out, and we are in the process of constructing a new substation. It's gonna be named Omito Station. It's gonna be right by the expressway here. This is gonna be an additional twenty-five MVA transformer added there. This station will carry mainly the Omito earth, and, but it'll be there, we will have ties that we can tie in and pick up Rancho Vehicle, in case of emergency. This project's been approved for four point eight million dollars, and we're looking at September of two thousand and eight for completion. So we actually made both of the possible projects that we just received yesterday. So we're moving forward in the station. And you can't really distinguish some of the colors here on the map, but there is a... This is FM seventeen thirty-two right here. This yellow line, which right here, will be part of the Neo Omito Station. This is the Rancho Viejo community, and this green line is from Cabasos Station. That's what right now is being Rancho Viejo. This, this yellow feeder will be built up to this point, and this is the point where we'll have a tie with the Rancho Viejo. Basically, that's the main feeder to Rancho Viejo, which is out of Cabasos. This station, like I said, will pick up Omito, and will also have picked up some exposure on some of the other feeders coming down through the expressway from Los Fresnos. Now, Cabasos Station, we're looking at relocating the station. For, the station will move about half a mile east of the existing location. We won't change any transformer capacity whatsoever. What we're approving is that we'll be changing the station, instead of being on the sixty-nine KB, sixty-nine thousand volt line of the Brownsville Loop, we will be on the one thirty-eight thousand transmission line. Now, the station will have, like I mentioned, a tie to the Omito Station in case of emergency. Now, this station and Omito will not be on the same transmission line. So we have some redundancy here. Right now, we've, we're spending this year five hundred thousand for the property purchase for engineering and purchasing some of the materials. But most of the bulk of the money will be spent in two thousand, roughly about five point six million dollars. It's mainly construction, but some materials lost. This, we're looking at October's two thousand and nine, early two thousand and nine, at Golden Service. But, however, will not be, this will be online first before we take the old station out Now, we have Los Fresnos Station here. Los Fresnos Station has a feeder, and it'll be discussed in the second half of the presentation, that ten miles, basically, we're gonna do a conversion of Los Fresnos. The station will be converted from sixty-nine to one thirty-two. We're looking at January oh-nine, also in service. Basically, at that location, we have a capacity of two twenty-five MVA transformers. The station will be fed from a one thirty-eight transmission line. Now, this will be completely separate from the Omito Substation, and it'll also be off of, it won't be off of the Cabasos Station. So now, we've got three stations in, and this loop, that will be on three different transmission lines. The station will have a tie with the Omito Station in case of emergency as well. So far, it's been approved to dollars, but we're looking at spending roughly about the same in two thousand and seven, of a half a million dollars in property and engineering, and also purchasing some of the material. But in two thousand and eight, we're gonna spend the bulk of that money, roughly about five million dollars in construction. And now, if everyone can remember about the slide where it showed that the Brownsville Loop, we're basically taking all these stations, which is Los Fresnos, Cabasos, which are the heavier loaded stations, and we're putting it off separate transmission lines. And that'll basically take us off the sixty-nine system and move over to the one hundred and thirty-eight thousand system. These are some of the improvements, and all these improvements were already in the works about two years ago, and it's just, basically, it's all coming together right now. Leave this to my next slide.
That's part of the transmission, things that we're gonna be doing, that we've already done, and we're gonna be doing, and we're doing right now. And so we're gonna have different feeds coming into Rancho Viejo with our substations. Once we get them all in place, lights go out, we transfer to Omito, from Omito, we transfer to Los Fresnos, from Los Fresnos, we transfer it to Cabasos. That's your transmission end. Now, we're gonna talk about distribution. This is, the wires coming in from the substations down to your location of your homes, underground or above ground, where your transformers are, and they, and then your services come into your reader. We're talking about distribution here, and you're gonna like this piece too, because some of you are gonna say, well, how come my lights are out and their lights are on? Well, that's gonna change, completely. We're gonna have, we're gonna, we're gonna fix it, we're gonna fix it, we're gonna, they're gonna stay on for good. Tremendously, seriously. This guy here, I mean, he's a real expert at it, and Sam Silva, where are you at? There he is, right there. And he's gonna, he's gonna give you this piece right. Hey, pay close attention to this. This is good stuff.
You can break it easy.
Not buddy, I tell ya.
Good afternoon, everybody. Mayor, Matt Altman, thank you for having us here. My name is Sam Silva, I'm manager of Distribution Systems by U.P. Texas, and I pretty much oversee the distribution, construction, engineering, in the Grand Valley. And what I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about is the improvements that you're planning and are in the process of making on the distribution system. Now, the distribution system is more of our local system, it's four thousand volts, as opposed to sixty-nine thousand volts and one hundred and thirty-eight thousand volts, which is the voltage that comes in and that feed our substations. What I'm talking about is a distribution system that comes out of the substations, as Jerry Donald was saying, into our subdivisions and into your community, our communities, into our homes. So what I'm gonna talk about is the purpose for being here, talk a little bit about overview of the distribution system as it relates to the town of Rancho Viejo, talk about our outages that have occurred since the Cabasos Substation Transformer failure, and then talk about how we're planning on resolving some of the distribution issues that have been recognized, and then we can close the distribution loop. So we're here to talk about the distribution system, how it relates to the community of Rancho Viejo. Rancho Vehicle, the town Rancho Vehicle is served by two distribution circuits. One of the circuits is being served out of the Cabasos Substation, and it basically serves the middle of town. We have a second circuit that is served by the Los Fresnos Substation Circuit, and pretty much comes from Los Fresnos Substation on down to Highway seventy-seven, and it's pretty much the circuit that's in front of Rancho Vehicle on Highway seventy-seven, and it pretty much serves the north and south ends of town. So here's what I'm talking about, and allow me to kind of describe this map, and which would then pretty much hopefully give you a picture of the distribution system. Let me start out with Cabasos Substation. Now, in our plans, as far as improvements, Mr. Gonzalez mentioned the improvements that we're planning, that H.P. was planning to improve, certainly have already improved and replaced that old substation transformer, Cabasos Substation, with a newer, larger transformer with more capabilities. The brown circuit is our distribution circuit that comes along FM seventeen thirty-two and serves the middle of town. That's your overhead circuit that you see in the middle of town, but then it breaks out into all the underground loops, pretty much in the middle of town. The Los Fresnos Substation forces up the Highway one hundred, comes south and then feeds along Highway seventy-seven, and also feeds a lot of area down into the south of Rancho Viejo and into the northern Brownsville area. And we're gonna talk a little bit about all that exposure on our distribution system that affects, that affects our town here. And as you can see, it splits off and it serves the outer portions of those loops, the underground loop, and we have ties into those circuits. So as we look at the system, let me talk a little bit about the history of the distribution, the outages that were created on our distribution system. On February sixteen, we had a vehicle accident that was just south of here towards Cabasos Substation. And I'm talking about the outages on that thirty-five sixty, I call it Cabasos Substation. Our crews had to isolate that problem, so we opened up the breaker potentially to remove the car and to remove a broken pole from our circuit, and then we closed the circuit back up. Our discharge station is about a seven-minute outage, I'm sure to be recognized, that adds up on the sixteenth. Just last Friday, we had a primary down, distribution wire down on one of the, we had the second circuit out of Cabasos Substation, is what we call thirty-five fifty. The wire was down as we, as our crews were out trying to restore that power and isolate it and do what we need to do to correct that primary that failed. We had some problems at the station, we had some problems with switching the station. Unfortunately, they took out the entire station. The circuit, the distribution problem was not on the circuit feeding Cabasos, it was on the circuit feeding the river and feeding west of here. Unfortunately, we had problems with the switching process, took out the station, and we all saw that outage last Friday morning for almost two hours. As far as the entire distribution system, those are the two outages on our distribution system on the Cabasos Circuit. We've had some outages on the Los Fresnos Circuit, again, that serves the outskirts of town, east and west side. On January twenty-fifth, while all of the problems with the Cabasos Substation transformer was going on, y'all certainly remember that, one of the contractors that did work along the freeway here ran into our pole, ran into our primary, which took that section of line down and created an outage on that portion of the Los Fresnos Circuit, and we were out for almost an hour. Shortly after that, we had equipment failure, a piece of equipment, the recloser that is on Highway seventy-seven, right in front of, you know, the north side of town, failed. And we don't know why it failed, we figured probably the jolt on the poles that was close to the circuit probably kind of did some damage to the equipment. But that was out for a couple of hours to remove that equipment and replace that equipment on Highway seventy-seven. And here in a second, I'll show you a map that kind of pinpoints where these areas are. On March ninth, we had a primary down, again, a different contractor, big old truck, dirt, I believe it was like a dirt loading truck, ran into our line again, and took out the circuit, and we were out for over two hours at the highway crossing. And then, late March, we got primary down along Highway seventy-seven, which is a little further south of here. There was weather in the area, we're thinking it was lightning, but again, the circuit, the wire that failed was the circuit that goes into Brownsville, right along, it's the circuit right along Highway seventy-seven, so with the exposure there, no telling what could have happened. But we did have our primary down, and we were out for almost an hour, and y'all saw that, because it was on the Los Fresnos Circuit that's feeding this part of town. So this is that same... So, this is that same drawing that you see, that you saw earlier. Let's talk about the Cabasos circuit here first. And right up, when you see right here on FM fourteen twenty-one, south of seventeen thirty-two, that's where the vehicle accident occurred, around that area. And that is what caused the outage, that first outage. Last Friday, we had primary down, as I mentioned, over here on the left side, on the other circuit that comes out of Cabasos substation. Typically, that would not have done any, caused any outages on Rancho Viejo. Unfortunately, like I said, when we were doing switching, there were some problems with the switching and the power station went out. So, we had, again, to get the Cabasos circuit out. But as you can see, and as we know from the planning point of view, the distribution circuit out of Cabasos is a good circuit, it's, it's, it's not too far, the source is not too far away from Rancho Viejo. And as you can see from the Los Fresnos circuit, it doesn't have all the exposure of being along the highway and all that highway construction. It doesn't have all the exposure of north side Brownsville, where we have all the commercial and all the dynamics, the load dynamics as well, as all the things that could get into our circuits and cause problems for the feeder that serves Rancho Viejo. And as you look at where the outages occurred on the Los Fresnos feeder, you can see where the two primary contacts that were, occurred on the Carmen crossing and the Cortez crossing. And right close to the Cortez crossing was where our equipment failed about a month later. So, we're thinking they probably will be later. And the other outage that occurred on the Los Fresnos circuit that was listed is some primaries were down further south on Highway seventy-seven. So, what are we going to do to kind of make things better from the distribution side? And Mr. Gonzalez mentioned all of the plans that we have, and some of the things we've already done to improve the substation, to replace the transformer, to increase the capacity of the transformer to the substation at Cabasos, and we're going to take advantage of those improvements at Cabasos substation. And we're going to remove the service from Los Fresnos and remove all of that exposure that's on the freeway, and the exposure that's coming all the way from Los Fresnos and into Rancho, and remove all of that exposure and put all Rancho Viejo on what we consider a better circuit, which is the Cabasos circuit. Especially now that the substation has this new transformer, more capacity, we'll talk about another advantage to this circuit. And we're going to add some re-closer devices on our distribution circuit so that we can do a better job of isolating the highway crossings so that when, when we do have damage to our circuit along this construction area on seventy-seven, hopefully not have as many customers out and do a better job of responding to the outage and get the meds on quicker. Add some switches also to improve the outage response. And we're going to, I guess, I guess, increase our patrols. So, we can be out of the Cabasos circuit taking a little bit better job of increase our frequency of patrolling the distribution circuit and patrolling the infrastructure within Rancho Viejo. All these improvements is about a hundred thousand dollars. And for distribution, for this area, it's, you know, it doesn't compare to the millions of dollars that the substation transmission group is spending for the improvements on the one thirty-eight system and the sixty-nine KV system. But we do feel this money is going to be well spent, and hopefully we'll see improvement in the distribution part of the Rancho service of town. So, what we'll see then is that we'll remove the exposure of the Los Fresnos feeder off of our service to the town of Rancho Viejo and put it all on what we consider a better distribution feeder to serve Rancho Viejo. Along with the fact that we have now the improved substation, improved Cabasos substation, and that new, larger transformer. One of the other things we're doing, and Mr. Gonzalez mentioned this, is that we have now a one thirty-eight twelve KV station. And we're in the process of taking steps to connect the Cabasos station to this new station, it's a temporary station, but it is there, and take advantage of the fact that the one thirty-eight transmission system is more reliable than the sixty-nine transmission system, at least historically. So, what we want to do then is take advantage of that one thirty-eight KV transmission. The transformer, the transformer in the substation is a lot closer to the source, a lot closer to town, so it improves the reliability in that you don't have so much exposure between the source, which is the substations, and the road, which is your homes. So, hopefully we'll see some improvements in that. As far as the timetable for making these distribution changes and distribution improvements, we've already started, we started yesterday, weather was a little problem yesterday, but we hope to have all the distribution improvements complete and in service by the end of the month.
Luke Christensen, I live on Cortez. And one of the things you addressed earlier was that you're going to tell us why we don't have electricity. On the other side of Resaca, they have electricity. On the other side of number three, Green, they have electricity. You know, how are you going to fix this? Is there a problem with the line going through Cortez? If there is, can you fix it? The other thing is, well, there's two other things really. Number one is trying to get you people on a telephone, which is ridiculous. It takes fifteen minutes to get to a human. Now, I'm going to get to a human being, and she says, well, I'm sorry, but there's a power outage in Corpus Christi. What does that have to do with the people on both sides of you that have electricity? Does the power outage in Corpus Christi doesn't affect everything coming down here? It doesn't make sense, and maybe you need to educate your people a little bit better. But my biggest question is, what are you going to do about Cortez? I mean, we had five power outages last week, five. Well, Alvarado was down.
Wait, 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 hold on. You've got the floor. It's not an interaction between you and the other people in the audience, it's you and the people.
Two years ago, Christmas Eve, December twenty-fourth, we were without power for twenty-four hours. My house went down to fifty degrees. Yet people in other areas had electricity. Thank God, I had foresight to have natural gas with a stove that we could make coffee. But, you know, enough is enough. You know, what, my original question is, what are you going to do about Cortez?
I'd like to refer the question to Sam Silva. Bishop Sam Silva, and I'll address the question with regards to Cortez, the question with regards to the phone center and that type of thing.
Well, I understand that, that's quite regurgitating people.
Right. Yeah, and as I tried to mention within the distribution system, how it's serving Rancho Viejo, we do have a circuit from Cabasos serving the middle of town to Carmen area.
This is Cortez.
Okay, and, yeah, excuse me. And then the Los Fresnos circuit serves the outskirts, which I guess is on the north side.
Cortez is on the south side.
What we're, what we're planning on doing, and part of the issues with that circuit is, as I mentioned, the exposure on the Los Fresnos circuit. And some of the problems that we have, not only in the distribution circuit, but also in the substation. By placing all Rancho vehicles on the Cabasos distribution circuit and the improved substation with the larger transformer, we feel those improvements, the improvements we've already made on the substation end of it, and the improvements that we're going to make on the distribution end of it within the next couple of weeks, a few weeks, will improve the problems that you're having, not only at Cortez, but all of them. And again, what we're looking at is a more reliable feeder in the Cabasos distribution feeder. We're going to take advantage of that and remove the rest of Rancho Viejo from the less reliable, more exposed Los Fresnos feeder. Tie that into a source, which is Cabasos substation, with this brand-new, bigger transformer. Now, that transformer from Cabasos is on the sixty-nine KV loop. To even improve even better, we've got this new substation that's on the one hundred thirty-eight KV transmission loop, and we think will improve the reliability even more. Now, so that's our plan, and hopefully, hopefully you'll see the difference in the reliability. But that is our.
I hope so.
Mr. Wilson, I want to, the last part of his question was that you can't get any information. First of all, you can't get through, then you can't get any information. Some people went to the AEP website, it's going to be down in twenty days, forty-three, and it said, no major power outages. Does that mean that Rancho Viejo is not?
No, sir, no, it had nothing to do with Rancho Viejo, or Corpus Christi, or Pleasanton, Texas. It had to do with our website. We proactively did not install this information on that website when this took place. That was our fault. But we learned a lesson for Rancho Viejo because of that, we really did. Any power outage there now, that we have a major one like that, will be on the website, believe me. That was our mistake, one hundred percent. We apologize for that, look on it again, it'll be there.
No, we already know it's on the website.
Oh, that's right. You said problems are a much better.
Let me go back to the back, Sam.
Steve Amorera, I don't live in Rancho Viejo, but I work for Rancho Viejo Resort and Country Club. How possible is it to have official reports on the outages? Because sometimes, as I saw in your presentation, the dates or the timing of the outage issues are different. We have a logbook in front desk, and we always log in all the outages when we lost it, when it comes back. And we have to report not only to our hotel guests and find a solution, but also our members and the community in general that knows our phone number pretty well. So, it is very important for us to have an official report of what happened and for many reasons, not only informative.
So, report it back. Go ahead.
To report back to you an outage afterwards, after it has taken place?
If we have to take it.
Report back to the city?
Yes.
We could make sure that the club gets a copy of that, but we don't get the report either.
Of the power outage, I will do that personally, I will, because that's my job with you folks. I'll, I'll take care of the city, and I'll relay it from there.
We will, we'll go do that.
From the past outages, can we get those? Because we've been asking for those, and I cannot get them.
You can get those to the city.
Mainly from.
There was a lady in the back.
It was me.
Yes, it was you.
I'm Diane Guards, I live on Five Alvarado, that's pretty close to the hotel. And we have outages all the time, I'm being embarrassed because I've had guests in my home. No lights.
You live in Rancho.
I'm getting candles, I pray, you know, I've got lanterns for emergency purposes, but again, I have no lights. One of the times, I did drive by because I was hoping the lights, as I had been promised, would be back on maybe within an hour or so. But this was not true. I finally walked over there by the clubhouse and spoke to a gentleman, and I said, please be honest, are we going to have lights today or not? If not, let me move into town, find a room. And he said, the transformer here is in bad shape, lady. There's a big box there by the hotel, by the hotel. And they were working quite diligently on there. And he said, this, this thing out here, it needs to be replaced, we're going to try to fix it, you know? But the condition of this box doesn't look good, I want to be honest with you. So, I wonder, since y'all do all this, and you inspect these things, have you had a chance to inspect that box? No, I'm very serious, because it affects me. And like I said, I live on the Resaca side, no lights. Yeah, still on Alvarado, a couple blocks down, all my neighbors have lights. So, this has been just too often. You know what I'm saying? I'm not here to be ugly about anything, but I am concerned because it just happens so frequently. You have to look tight, think, I'm asleep.
So, have you, go ahead, Sam.
That's why we're here, that's your concern, that's the interest of your folks, and the complaint you're facing. I wanted the first question to play, Ben. He covers this area.
I was there when you came by.
Okay, you were the one.
I was the one who went in there. Anyway, we ordered switchgear for that location, and one of the, they're totally different from others, they don't have a contamination problem.
Okay, they are, I'm working in the garden, it's good, I'm very happy to hear that, thank you.
Ms. Garza.
Hi, yes, I'm Maria Garza, I'm one of the members for the Strategic Planning Committee, Master Plan. I do have a question for AEP. Lately, we have had a lot of power surges. And we've had a coffee pot burn, I've been on the computer, you know, lose everything. And we're giving substandard service, to tell you the truth. As Los Finos came in, and then seventeen thirty-two is growing, we're just receiving substandard service, so, what I would like to know, Algon Cortez, and I can see my neighbors across number four, the fairway, with lights up and down the street. We're all down Cortez from the railroad all the way to the end of Cortez. So, can you help us? I understand it's one of the transformers that's outdated, and I've lived on Cortez five years, and for five years I have been calling, but lately it has been more frequent. And I'm concerned my appliances are taking a punishment, not only mine, but all my neighbors.
Excuse me, again, again, normally this doesn't happen in entities like this. This is, this has been a pretty tough area for us, it really has. And not only because of our equipment failure that's happened, we're causing our problem, it's because of the public, that has happened, and then because of Mother Nature at times. But in this area, there's been a lot of outages. Normally, we don't have them, normally we don't. But it has happened here, but on that thirty-two hundred circuit breaker we're talking about out of Los Fresnos, that's a lot of exposure out there, and Sam showed you that, where all that blue of all that area is covering it. And now, we're going to eliminate that completely. And we're going to put everything off of the Cabasos station and bring it in. And it's a short distance, what is that, about two miles from that station, from there to here? Two, three miles, four miles, how far?
What is that timeline on that?
Two weeks each, well, he's making some changes here locally with the distribution system. He said within two weeks.
So, you don't have it in two weeks, we change to other service providers.
Everybody's going to be fed off of Cabasos substation at Rancho Viejo, this area. And the liability of service is skyrocketing.
We want ours to skyrocket also.
Well, you're part of it, you're going to be part of that.
Right now, I feel like I live in a third world country, you know? Actually, the power goes on.
Absolutely, absolutely, that's why we're here.
Well, I, I hope that you can fix the problem and help us out, because we're just starting, and they're my neighbors, thank you.
Roger. Roger, you're going to tell us, I was going to say. It's scary, it's, I understood what you guys were saying here, I thought you were going to vote for us. Okay, now, going back to December two thousand and four, transformer went out. Paul, when are we going to get? Paul, when are we gonna get the electricity back on 36-hour cars up? They said replacement transformers in Corpus Christi. Nobody wanted to drive the icy roads, this is the explanation I have.
2004.
2004, Christmas Day, we had this whole story, so nice. Okay, so they couldn't get the transformer down here because of the Corpus, and the roads were icy, and they didn't want to gamble it, running it down, get money off the road. My question is, is that where you keep your spare parts? In Corpus?
Emergency.
And a thunderstorm here, a six-inch rain, is not extreme weather, extreme weather here is a hurricane. If we have a hurricane, again, there are spare parts up in Corpus, how do we, you know, how long will we be out? Do we have to move to Houston until it's done? I mean, we're talking, what I wanna know is where are your spare parts for all this stuff? Do we have them here at warehouse, or we gotta go to Corpus every time?
Sam, would you like to work on that?
Man.
I'm trying to remember which transformer we were talking about.
Well, I'm Los Fresnos.
The Los Fresnos substation transformer?
Yeah, because I was thinking that's what it was, but I didn't hear a beep.
And then see, we may have had a substation issue, but we'll represent the drivers, and the last question.
This, December 24th, 2004, around about 3, 4 o'clock in the morning?
I think so.
It's immaterial.
5:00 AM.
Where are the boys?
What happened is immaterial. What his question was is, are the parts, are the spare parts, all stored in Corpus Christi?
No. The spare parts, we are distributing, and we've got some here in Harlingen, we've got some in Far. We're improving our spare parts. You know, we have internal auditors that are constantly watching us not to have too much spare equipment. So we, luckily, things have changed, and we are now having spare equipment here, and we've actually been redundant. I oversee the, like Mr. Wilson mentioned, both the east and west end of the valley. So with the help of another department, we are storing equipment here in Harlingen, at our service center. We're storing equipment in Far, at the service center, that can be utilized on either's end of the valley. And then we have additional equipment in Corpus. Corpus was our major place to go to, but that is changing. And regards to December 24th, Mayor, I just wanted to add, it wasn't a transformer that failed that day. We had a breaker that failed, the actual feeder break, the 3200.
Did that kill anybody?
No, I was out there with the guys, working with them.
Where did the parts come when it was down in January, for two or three days?
The parts were actually here in San Manito, at our reserve unit.
That was not the word I got. The word I got is that they're coming from Corpus Christi, and that the truck would be there. The AEP, if you remember, were staged over in La Hacienda subdivision. I went in there, talked to the people, they said the truck is coming from Corpus Christi.
That was the temporary mat for the road.
I'm sorry, I'm not in the electrical business, I don't understand all those terms. But I do know what I heard, and that was the truck will be here from Corpus Christi.
And that was correct, a truck was coming down from Corpus Christi, but it didn't have the major piece of equipment that failed. Like you mentioned, that major piece of equipment was sitting on the low buoy on FM 1732 for many hours.
And that came from your local park?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Did the second transformer?
We had a, we did have a spare transformer, and depending where you got your information, we did have an additional transformer coming in, in case we couldn't get Cavasos Substation up and going. We had a separate crew, crew coming from Corpus with this transformer, and it was gonna go into where we have that temporary location right now. So we were working a Plan B as well as Plan A, you know, in case our outage at Cavasos was prolonged. And basically, at that point in time, there was a race, which one could come in first.
Just give that.
Harry, well, just picking up on that, Craig mentioned, or you did, the mats that were used to get in. The new substation, is it going to be built, so that you can get into it, replace transformers? Because if we get a major hit, I'll guarantee you, this place will flood. And you will not get heavy equipment into it, unless it's concrete or some structure that you can move in and out of. And that, to me, is a much bigger issue than some of these others we're discussing. Because when that hits, and you're gonna put that kind of money into a new substation, and, you know, do those kind of things, please, do not do what we have out there now, or we'll be right back into it.
I have a couple things.
You may include Rick.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tim Trapp and I live on Cortez, too, with the AEP Cortez. And I wanna first express appreciation for these gentlemen to finally come in and take some heat on this. It should've probably happened back Christmas two years ago, and there should've been some more communication since then, because you guys are in the service business, and we are paying pretty high energy costs, and we deserve, I think, to get better service than we did. And if I have a comment to make, because a lot of this stuff, I mean, I still feel like we're only gonna have two years more of outages. And you guys should've been a little more proactive in getting this stuff done. That's my feeling, like, when it started at Christmas, there should've been some communication, there should've been some effort, and I think the work should've started back then. That's my personal opinion on it. And I know you probably don't have an answer, that's more of a comment than a question, but that's how I feel about it. And I'll tell you what, we do need these reports, because it has taken a heavy toll on our computers in our offices, because we're here at Rancho and trying to run a business, and it's damn embarrassing to have to explain this over and over to our guests, and a lot of times to our members what's going on. And like Sylvia says, we have everybody in the community call us and wanna know, and the phones just start ringing, and we have kind of an old, old system up there, and the phones, after about an hour, they go out too. And so that means that we quit getting business, we quit getting reservations and phone calls, and that's our lifeblood. And we just don't appreciate it. And this should've started a long time ago.
James Rosamont Tesoro. I'm confused about what I saw in your presentation, and what I'm hearing about these logged outages. Because I'm here to tell you, if I come home from work on a day and don't have to go in and reset every clock, my lights in my home, I'm here, you know, I'm a ghost. I mean, I don't see how you can translate, and I can't personally translate what you show on your little records, and how do you maintain those, and what accountability do you have that that's really all the outages? I don't mean to be difficult with this, but, you know, these people don't care if it's a big part, small part, this part, that part. We don't, we don't care about that. We want to be able to cook a meal when it's time to eat, the alarm going off when it's time to get up and go to work, the CPAP machine to sleep at night when, if you have sleep apnea and your power's off. I mean, it's just beyond, it's just ludicrous, it just makes no sense. And so how can I not, you know, round out of my appliances, and I think, oh, my gosh, I just bought that new air conditioner, please, you know, don't fry it tonight? And so those are the things that, you know, we as a community are looking at. And all these little ways that you all can, I do appreciate you coming, but it's like, we feel so inadequate to ever get an answer or get anything addressed, because, oh, well, that's his department. Well, I'll ask Mr. Stone. And your people don't always, ever seem to be on the same page when anybody's trying to get straightforward information. And by golly, if I've got 15 guests, some very elderly, little infants in my home for a holiday, and I wanna know, if I don't have power, I can call somebody and get a straight answer, and if you tell me you're not gonna have lights, radar, fine, I'll put them in a hotel someplace. But we just have to know how to function. And she's right, this is worse than living in a third world country. I lived in Puerto Rico back in the 70s, and we burned candles, and we bought them because we knew we weren't gonna have lights. But I didn't expect to come here and buy half a million dollar house, and never think that I can go and I can cook, go to bed, get up, take a shower, or whatever. I mean, it just makes no sense.
Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Yeah, I, what I heard tonight, it sounds like...
I'm sorry, it's station name.
Oh, yeah, you're calling, I live on Tesoro. The one I heard tonight, it sounds like the AEP is doing a pretty good job of setting things up there just two, three years late. I've only lived here four years. I do have a battery backup on my computer, so I find that there's a lot of little, little momentary shortages. It'll tell me, oh, you're back on AC power now, I've been on battery power. As far as getting information from AEP, when we had the big blackout several months ago, transformer went out, part of the town was shut down for three, four days. I was lucky, I was in a park that was only shut down for a day. But I was able to get through, past your computer, which is not easy to a person, to give you a little bit of help. The last one we had, probably, I never got past the computer. I got a computer telling me, yes, you're out of power. Well, I knew that. And as far as being on the website, when you don't have any power, you don't have a website. We can't, we can't look at anything with a computer now. I can only run so long on battery power. But the only temporary, you'd be timed enough to shut stuff down, so I don't lose it. But I do appreciate what you're doing now, pleasure.
Wilson, I think that it's a bit hard to relate the outages that we failed at Rancho to the seven outages you showed on the screen, two of which were several minutes. Doesn't seem that you have adequate control to know when outages are hurting, if that's all the outages that you showed. So I think you need to look into that, because we, sections of town, not all of town, the sections of town seem to have many more outages than what you reported since January 23, 2007. But I think you need to go back and check that. We will, as the city, from this day forward, we will be more diligent in recording which section of town and how long it's out. I assume that after April the 30th, that if one place is out, the entire city will be out. Because you will have moves in all the Cavasos stations on that. Who else have a question?
Oh, I had just one comment and one question, just a little follow-up on what Mayor Flood just did say. You indicated, well, first of all, Carol Lutens, I live on Pizarro, not Cortez, so I'm supposed to be one of those that across the fairway has power. So I'm served by the Los Fresno Substation, and you've indicated in March, we had two outages. However, on Pizarro, I had eight, just in March. So far in April, I've had two. So following up, following up with a question along those lines, we've heard a lot of talk about transformers and substations and insulators. I'm wondering about our underground wiring and the maintenance that is done, and checking on that, because we've had underground wiring here in Rancho Viejo for, well, I've been here almost 10 years, and I'm assuming well longer than that. So how often is that checked, and is that a problem? We get a little bit of rain when I lose power, and I can't imagine any other reason.
I'd prefer that question to Sam, Sylvia.
I can just talk a little bit about that. In our presentation, we did mostly concentrate on the big problems, and certainly the Cavasos substation outage, and some of the things we're doing about that. Let me say that we know of the other outages, at least, I get reports that we got an outage. We didn't talk, and I didn't mention, and I apologize for that, I should've. But this doesn't include, our presentation didn't include all of the outages. It included the major system improvements from the feeders and the substation and the transmission. There is no doubt, there are other feeders, and I have a list of them, and we can share that with you, and that kinda thing. The idea and plan that we have is to do patrols on the infrastructure in Rancho Viejo. Certainly, that means the underground system, it's all mostly underground system. We have done patrols in the past, I cannot tell you how often we'll do it, I apologize for that. But let me say that our plan is definitely to begin to patrol the transformer, underground cable system, secondary system, to begin to put down a report, and develop a plan to make any improvements.
Do you have a timeline for that?
No, ma'am, I don't, we can certainly develop a timeline and measure as quickly as possible, and we do that. And certainly, we should do that. And again, I apologize for not mentioning that, in the overall scheme of things, we're looking at a bigger picture. But we do plan on having patrols such as we have in the past. But obviously, certainly, we need to improve them, and we will.
Does the report that comes to the city need to be included at all?
Yeah, we have, we have reports of single customer outages, which is like secondary pedestal failure, connection failures. We have, where we have laterals, which is, you know, maybe several transformers that are out in, you know, a block or so, or customers, and that kinda thing, we can serve and share that with you.
And what about, if an outage, one more question, if an outage occurs, I was told one of, I don't know, the fifth or sixth time in March, to request an investigation of my signal strength. I've done that twice, but I haven't heard anything. Can you comment on that?
Signal strength, I don't know what they may have told you about that, other than maybe some, you could request a quality control, and go out there and monitor, or put some equipment on the transformer. Typically, visual inspection of the connection and the transformer itself can determine the problem. So...
So doesn't it seem that rather than a person is gonna have three or four times during the month to request that, and you know how hard it is to get to AEP, don't you think that should be part of AEP's quality performance to do the investigation?
Well, no doubt, yes, we should do the investigation. And we have, and we have a customer service group that, full-time job is to do that, further requests. But I think you're right, you know, we probably need to be more proactive, and, but that starts in trying to identify the problems for the first. Certainly, we know where these outages are, and when we have an outage. Our plan is to go replace the things that broke that are causing the outage, replace the transformer, replace the cable, replace the connections, that type of thing. Go any further than that is, again, part of the patrols and inspections to do that.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Luke Correa, I also live at Tesoro, and I've been here approximately 11 years now. And when we first came out here, we were having outages, and we understood that. But in the past two or three years, it's really gotten ridiculous. I agree with Mr. Luton, and I really agree with Mr. Newbar. If we do have a hurricane or something come by, you know, these rains that we've had is nothing compared to what could happen if we had a hurricane. And when it rains or drizzles, our power goes out, we never know if we're gonna have power or not. And, you know, it's really and truly ridiculous, I mean, everybody's saying the same thing, everybody's talking about the same thing. And, but my concern is that if we've had this problem for 11 years, and it must've happened before I got here, are we going back, are we checking your underground systems, the underground wires? Are we replacing all the transformers, or just replacing some of the transformers? Because evidently, we've got major problems, and if one goes out in this block, the other goes out in that block, it sounds to me that we oughta just go by and get it all done. It's outdated, and is the equipment we're buying, is it updated? I mean, is it, is it good, or are we having a problem with the equipment that we're buying? And the people, are they trained properly? I mean, and again, one of the biggest issues I have, I have a business. If you have a problem, you call, you call my business, and somebody will answer, and somebody will give you a reason, or somebody will follow up on it. We can't even get these people to answer the phone. We have no idea what's going on, ever. We have no idea what's going on, ever. And, and I don't know how, I don't know how you, you know, you guys are making a fortune. And we're not paying you necks and dimes. We're paying a lot of money to get good service and we are not getting service. Bottom line, pathetic service. And I'd like to see if we can move somebody else, if these people can get this thing corrected. There ought to be somebody else that can give us a better service.
I just want to follow up a little bit on what several people have mentioned, but in electronics and electrical equipment, there is a life cycle. And it would seem to me that you should have equipment either scheduled for replacement or spares in stock to replace something when it comes up. And it doesn't appear that there's a planned maintenance program with it. Again, it's not a question. But somebody that offices out of the house and has to protect my computer from all the spikes that we get, it seems like everything. It's, and again, the gentleman talking about his laptop. I have to have that because I office out of my house. And otherwise, I have fine equipment, as Ms. Garza said about her coffee machine. And it's just, you know, it's ridiculous.
Cynthia, my lady of Rancho Viejo, is there something we can do to protect our equipment other than having this power surge? Because we do that and we have lost computers, shears, the ice machines and many other things. And we are having this equipment protected. Is the solution just to shut off everything when we're not using?
Basically, all handsowers and businesses and everybody is supposed to have a surge protector on all of their equipment at home. That's just, that's just part of the business now. For the spikes burning things up, that won't ever happen if you have, you know, kind of low voltage and the process now spike and voltage or it goes real high for some reason. That there is a possibility you could lose some equipment, yes. But you're supposed to have a surge protector on all your equipment.
And still they are being tried. All our equipment is protected by that. And even though we have that, every single equipment, we've been losing. Maybe on the January twenty-sixth. That was, by the way, it was not for a few minutes. It was from eight-thirty in the morning to six-forty in the afternoon.
I just don't see the variation in voltage. Once you lose power, you just lose it.
The moment, the moment it happened, it was on and off, on and off for several seconds. And less than a minute. And then the power went off. And when we got the power back at six-forty at night, we noticed all the equipment that was damaged.
Oh, well, that, going back and forth, I'd defer that to either Buddy or Sam. I don't know. What would cause that?
Well, and let me say that, that I, that we, in talking about the January outage, yeah, that was something that was certainly a lot of reasons why we had the main transformer failure. And then we were trying to serve the area through other circuits and that type of thing. Which is our plan to do that, that's, that's, that's part of the restoration plan. But there's no doubt that, that, you know, this was a special case, a problem for us. We understand it's a problem for us. We hope that that is not the typical service. And we're trying to correct the things that were created back in January by replacing the transformers, doing the system improvements and that type of thing. And, and as far as, as the distribution system within the town, we will certainly begin to address the replacement of transformers and be more proactive in getting some of this equipment replaced. As far as, as the damage to equipment within the home and that type of thing, I, you know, I, there are so many variables involved. I just, you know, I can't give you solutions. And I apologize for that. Maybe an electrician can help you with that. I can certainly, you certainly can call AEP and have a customer service representative come to your home and look very closely at the particular situation. And he's certainly trained to make those recommendations. But to say overall, you know, what the problems were in situations like that, you know, I would prefer to be calling AEP and requesting someone to come to your home and help you. And certainly not so bad.
Hello, Miss Spikin, I'm Cortez. Do you know when Cortez is out or do thirty of us have to call and tell you? And then when I do call, I've gotta give numbers, ask if a dog in my yard, am I the only one out? Are you sure it's just your house or somebody else's? We're cross-examined a lot. But do you know when the whole street goes out or do we have to call you?
Yes, I mean, yes, I mean, we know. We have our dispatchers in DeCortis and they have SCADA systems and they know when particular customers are out. And certainly, we can get on the computer, we make calls and we communicate. Of course, we have first responders that as soon as, as there is an outage, we send our service mechanics, buddy's crew, and so forth to come over and give the investigation. From an operation standpoint, we know when we have the response because the dispatchers have that information. I would say that the phone center, the people that you call from the phone center and, and that is CPL retail phone center, unless you're calling the outage number, which then it would be your AEP phone center. They get their information from dispatching and from the field. We will, we will call them and give them estimates as far as when the outage will be restored, when the problem will be fixed. We certainly have some, some issues with the information that is coming from the phone center to our customer. I can relay that information back. And, but again, we do know, from an operation standpoint, we know when the outage will occur. Because we respond to that. We're, we're the ones that send the servicemen out.
Then I don't have to get a flashlight, find your number, get all those special numbers and call you? You know, and you're gonna respond.
We know.
I don't have to do anything.
If, if it's a single outage, yeah, if it's-
No, I'm not talking single outage.
We were talking about the things we were talking about today.
You can hear the air conditioners all go off, so you know your neighborhood's out.
Why can't the dispatch center or the call center, why can't they acknowledge that they know that it's out? If they have a time that, that you reported that it's gonna be fixed approximately or if they have no time, that they say, at this time, we don't have an estimated time for it to be back online. Why can't they say that? What is wrong with that versus grilling the person and wanting to know how many people are out?
I don't have a good answer to that. And I can guess why they do that and that-
Did you, we have a Jeffrey trade-
I asked a question.
But if you know, the call center should say, we are working on it, we're sending someone out and going to town this time. Or if they do have an estimate, here's what the estimate is. Who is, someone else, Mr. Kennedy?
Fred Kennedy on Santa Ana, I've been there for nineteen years. I've been on Santa Ana, we was pretty lucky until two years ago. We had electricity when everybody else was being out. But I think that what you've heard here today kind of proves that this is beyond, because of your lack of service, because of your lack of care and because of the, the way your business is being run, you're doing it to make profit. And you're making probably more than what you should. And, and I think it's time that this city goes together collectively and probably bring a lawsuit against you for the citizens of Rancho Viejo to reimburse us for what we have been losing. I mean, there's too much loss that's been going on by all of us. And if you was to add up everybody's loss on account of your negligence, it goes way beyond an act of God. It goes way beyond nature taking care of it. It is your lack of taking care of the system as it should be. You need to reimburse us for some of the losses that we're doing. And it really takes somebody here at the city to, to get a lawsuit going to bring you guys down to your knees. It should be done. And, and I think that just here, listening to you all and talking back and forth to us is over. It should, you owe us money and you should be finding a way to reimburse.
You've already had two or three times. Do you have anything new?
Yes.
Something new?
Yes. Okay. Is for the customer service department or the dispatchers, whoever needs to change this procedure? In the last outages, when we are asking for a report and they say, well, you're the only person that has called and do you authorize a charge to be done to you because we're going to send someone to be inspecting?
And charged.
So do we have to accept to be charged for reporting an outage?
To be charged if you report an outage? You should never be charged for that unless, now, they tell you, if you call in and say, well, my power's out and my neighbor's power's out, that's fine. But if you just say your power's out, then they're, they're gonna ask you, have you checked your breakers? That's normal for the phone center, they've got their questions they're gonna ask.
Yes.
And then they say, then they say, if it is your problem, they're gonna charge you. But if it's not your problem, you won't be charged. That's it.
Let me give you an example. We call and sometimes we call on behalf of many of the people who call the front desk. And we call on behalf of the houses where we have guests reporting that there is an outage. And we finally go through to a human being and when they start taking the information, they say, well, you're the only person who has called. Yeah, because I'm calling on behalf of many people. And as she said, do you have their, their meter number? No? Okay, then, have you checked your brakes? We know we're out of power, we can see the whole town black. And she says, at least has been more than once. Well, we're going to send someone to check and let me tell you that there is going to be a charge. And I have to argue with them, why should I be charged?
Well, they shouldn't be telling you there's gonna be a charge. They should tell you, is it a possibility if it's on the customer side? If it's not, you won't be charged. They tell you, you're gonna be charged, that's wrong.
That's why I'm saying, you have to talk to your people, customer service or the dispatcher in the procedure where they are taking our reports and the way they saw that we're going to be charged. Because if I authorize the charge, because she actually says, do you authorize this charge? And I'm out of power, I have to say yes.
Sure.
Anyone else? Something new?
Commander, I'm Max, darling, I'm living in Carolina. I haven't lived there any longer than Kenny has. I've been there twelve years. And I finally gave up and bought a generator and, and I've got battery backups on all my computers and things. That's a matter of survival. Honestly, when I first moved out here, I thought at the time it thundered. They had somebody assigned to go turn the switch on. Because the lights are lit now. So, that being said, I believe that they shouldn't leave this meeting without at least giving you a phone number where you can get a live person. That if the mayor of Houston called AEP, I guarantee you, he can get to somebody on the board of directors down there.
Mayor's down my home. Yeah, as a matter of fact, Friday, I-
Yeah, but she didn't have it back in January because I talked to you twenty times.
No, I didn't have it.
And you were getting the same runaround all the rest of the charts on the way or this, that and the other.
I have it, I talked to you Friday. As a matter of fact, as strange as it may be, the power came on while I was talking to Mr. Wilson on the phone Friday. I don't know how that happened, so it could be that it's magic.
Well, I know, buddy, in under forty years, I could probably get a hold of him.
Yeah, well, but something new. A new, it's new.
Tim Trapp, Deputy Cortez. This kind of isn't along the same lines with what Fred's asking, not so much about lawsuits, but what kind of franchise fee agreement do we have with AEP?
We get a franchise. We, we don't have an agreement.
You don't have an agreement at all?
This, my understanding is the state of Texas has certified AEP to Rancho Viejo. And that's the only person that is certified to Rancho Viejo.
Has there ever been one?
I have no idea. Ever, I, I haven't had any way of knowing. I doubt it. I doubt it. I, is there anyone else? I, I'm gonna make a couple of comments just and then we're gonna move on. Anyone else got anything? All right. It sounds to me like that AEP is moving their substation to Cabasos, a hundred percent for Rancho Viejo. Upgrading it. Building in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, a reserve station via Almito where we'll have backup later. That doesn't, that doesn't do much for me, doesn't impress me very much. Once we move a hundred percent to Cabasos and upgrade it, which will be done by the end of April, we should have, you can't ever say never, but we should not have any outages that are not by acts of God. If we do, it's probably the infrastructure here in Rancho Viejo. I would expect AEP, because of the things that they learned tonight and because they want to be a customer service oriented company, would come in and do all the investigation that they need to do to ensure that the infrastructure is sound in Rancho Viejo. Because of history, I'm not willing to accept Mr. Wilson's word, word, or any of you guys' word. We'll see it, the proof is in the pudding. But because it hasn't happened in the last four years since we were out over Christmas of two thousand and four and because it's just now being brought to light, I think the city is, has responsibility to investigate certifying another user or another provider in Rancho Viejo. I don't know what steps it takes to do that. I would be contacting the state of Texas to find out and see if we can certify another provider. I think that anytime that you have a single provider situation that they can say how concerned they are. But until you see the concern by the development they do, all that is, is words. We haven't seen it in the last three or four years, maybe the last eleven years. Therefore, I want to see it by, by the end of April, working just like you said. I'd like to see AEP investigate our infrastructure here in Rancho. But at the same time, and I hope it all works and I hope we're through and we're friends and we go on and everybody's happy from then on. But if it doesn't, we can't be held hostage to it. Therefore, I'm going to investigate some other way to get power. Number eleven, consideration action on employment of reserve police officer in San Luis Al. As you remember, we approved a reserve police officer. And now, we would like to hire that reserve police officer, Luis Allen Potatoes, as a promoted patrolman. Go out and look for another reserve officer. This will replace Mr. Hernandez, who's still on the reserve officer line. Do you hear a motion to approve or are there any questions? Do you hear a motion to approve?
I make a motion to hire Mr. Luis Colossus.
Number two.
Number two. Sorry, I've got Colossus on the break.
All right. Call it, please. Yeah. Give me a second.
Thank you.
I guess we'll have to do it. Number twelve, report of police and security duty.
Because the police department was operating shorthanded during the month of March. Three warrant collections were quite small. We totaled twenty-three-hundred-and-thirteen dollars for the month. Five or six thousand dollars a month. Lasted in a normal month. We get back the full staff and the police department, I'm sure they will get back to a normal number.
Before we make a motion to the jury, I want to thank AEP for coming out here to listen to all of the complaints, understand how, what the concern is of the citizens. I hope you'll do what you say you're gonna do. I hope you get it up to the running and I hope it will, the service will improve. I hope you get it up to running, and I hope that the service will improve. I'd also like to thank, most of the people who've gone, but I'd really like to thank all the people that came out tonight who were concerned enough to show up. Jake, did you have a question?
Mayor, do we have to set the starting date of the salary?
I don't have that. Is starting date?
Starting date would be the 11th at starting salary of $28,000, which is our starting salary.
Would you like to also make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to have the starting date be the 11th for Officer Ben Two, so his starting salary is $28,000.
All in favor? Do you hear a motion to the jury?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Who's going to second?
Second, everybody.
Everybody. All in favor?